As all members have received a copy of the call of tonight's meeting, the reading of the call will be omitted. Will everyone please rise? I'm going to ask William Sadak, senior at Greenwich High School, to lead us in the pledge of allegiance. William Sadak.
Thank you, Mr. Burns. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. At this point, I'll call on Libby Florin, state representative, and Irv Porter, member of District Six, to introduce our guest tonight. Libby Florin.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, and hello, all my friends in RTM. Good to see you. Since 1997, it has been my honor to work with Irv Porter as co-chair of the Boys and Girls State Commission. Irv is the heart and soul of this program, as well as being its head. He and I are both Boys and Girls State alumni. Irv attended New York Boys State in 1952, and I was elected lieutenant-governor of Empire Girls State, also in New York, but a few years after that.[90.47][90.47](Laughter). I'm not going to tell you how many few years after that. We believe in this program, and we're totally committed to its continuing success. So, we're still trying to give back, just like so many of you in this room are giving back each and every day, especially like some of the other Boys and Girls State alumni who are here tonight. Steve Walco, David Detchin, saw him, Greg Fruman, Daniel Farniars, Dean Goss, Jenny Crowe, Steve Meskers, and Doug Wells. And I'm sure there are many more in this room as well, but those are the names we knew. Boys and Girls State has been held on college campuses all across this country since, in the summer, since it began in 1934. It was sponsored, it is sponsored by the American Legion and the American Legion Auxiliary, and the program brings together student leaders who have just completed their junior year in high school. During the week-long program, the young people form their own state government. Two delegates are chosen to attend Boys and Girls Nation, where a hundred young people then form a federal government. They could probably do a better job than we're doing it ourselves. The 2011 Boys and Girls State delegates are, and I've asked them to wave when I call their names, Michael Croner, no, I don't think he's here yet, he's from Brunswick School, and from Greenwich High School, we have Luke Cochran, oh, good, Luke Kofir, Patrick Dillon, Emma Freeman, Alicia King, James O'Sullivan, Gwen Fetch, Andrew Reynolds, William Sadak, and Michelle Socker. Thank you so much, and now Irv would like to say a few words.[214.45][214.45](Applause).
I'm proud to be here, and I'm especially proud of the group that's behind me. All of this flack about the quality of the education that we have and the quality of young people that come out of this town is, as far as I'm concerned, a bunch of bunk. These people blew the socks off at Girls State and blew the socks off at Boys State, and they do it every year. Every year, the kids that represent their community, their school, and you, and I, and themselves just do us all proud. We use a competitive process in Greenwich. Candidates are chosen by the housemasters and the headmasters. They provide us with resumes, which highlight their achievements. Those are all presented to an interview panel. Selections are based on scholastic records, citizenship, leadership, community contribution, and their interviews. This is the group for 2011. They, just like their predecessors, have always left a very distinct and favorable impression with that program, with their counselors, and Greenwich succeeds as a result of that. I think that if you talk to people that are in the program, they simply ask, at the state level, what do you guys do differently? And we do have a competitive process that's different than anybody else in the state, and as a result of that, because of the competition and the nature of competition in our community, these young people come to appreciate that, and by the time they get to Boys and Girls State, they're ready to compete. William Sadak, who Mr. Byrne chose to lead us in the pledge, was elected this year as Connecticut Boys and State Governor, and was also chosen as one of two young men to represent the state with Boys Nation. And by Tuesday, this is a week-long program that starts on Sunday, by Tuesday, he had been selected and elected as the president pro tem of the Senate. That's the highest-elected position at Boys Nation that anybody in the state of Connecticut has ever achieved. Very special.[358.53][358.53](Applause). But not limited just to the boys. Every year, these kids contribute not only to what they believe in, write legislation, represent their parties, but they also are impact players and chosen for that reason before they go. And very often, we have in Greenwich, somebody's chosen at either Boys or Girls State for the contribution that, in the judgment of their counselors, was outstanding, and they were identified as the person that made the biggest difference in having a quality program. This year, that award was given to Emma Freeman by her Girls State counselors.[404.12][404.12](Applause). We offer our appreciation and our congratulations to William, to Emma, to the entire delegation who have proudly represented their school and their community, and carry on the great tradition in those two programs of Greenwich's leadership. Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I would appreciate it if we could all show our appreciation and congratulations with a standing "O."[433.31][433.31](Applause).
Thank you all very much for coming. Congratulations on all the accomplishments that you made at Boys and Girls State. And of course, thank you to Representative Libby Florin and Irv Porter for all the good work that you do. As all members have received a copy of the minutes of our June 13 meeting, the reading of those minutes will be omitted. Are there any proposed changes to those minutes? Hearing none and absent objection, the minute says, submitted, stand adopted upon unanimous consent. Stephen Walco, chairman of BET.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the RTM, Mr. Moderator, fellow citizens. I'll be brief. I just wanted to invite all of you to attend the public hearing at the October 17 BET meeting that will be in Town Hall Meeting Room starting at 6:30. We're holding a public hearing at this meeting to discuss and have a conversation about Nathaniel Withersall Project Renew. And so, just to give you a little bit of an update as to where we are, the BET requested a consultant to come and review the revised Project Renew, and the consultant's report will be final by that time. We intend to then hold the public hearing, as I mentioned, on October 17 at 6:30 PM, and then the BET will vote on Nathaniel Withersall Project Renew, the bonding resolution, in November. It's also my understanding that Nathaniel Withersall intends to submit to your call for the October meeting Nathaniel Withersall Project Renew for what, in essence, will be a first read, and then seek your vote at your December meeting. So I encourage you to attend the public hearing for the BET. Let us know your thoughts on the topic, but also to make sure that your questions are answered. Obviously, when you're looking out 20, 30 years in the healthcare arena, there are a lot of questions. Some will be able to be answered, others might not be able to be answered, but the hope is that we can have a discussion and a dialogue so that by the time that you have your vote on this topic, you have all of your questions answered, and we can avoid having unanswered questions be the focus of the debate. So again, October 17, 6:30 PM, in the Town Hall Meeting Room for a public hearing on Nathaniel Withersall Project Renew. Thank you.
Thank you. Mary Ferry, Chair of District Five.
District Five asks that you join us in celebrating the life of Dr. James W. Ennis, who died on August 29. Jim was elected to RTM in 1976 and served for 30 years. At various times, he was a member of the Education Committee, of the original Cost Containment Committee, which became Budget Overview Committee, and of the Public Works Committee, of which he was chairman for a number of years. In addition to his RTM service, Jim was chairman of the Sidewalk Committee, which is now Pedestrian Safety Committee, and served on the Board of Ethics, the Community Development Committee, on the Riverside Association Board of Governors for over 10 years, on the Board of Education, and on the Vestry of St. Paul's Episcopal Church. He was a popular volunteer at the Riverside Elementary School, where he helped children learn to read. All of this, in addition to having had a full-time medical practice. According to his obituary in Greenwich Time, quote, "Dr. Ennis practiced internal medicine and gastroenterology in Greenwich from 1964 to 1997. During those years, he held multiple leadership positions in local, state, and national medical organizations, as well as being active in medical education," end quote. On January 20, 2011, Jim was honored by the Riverside Association and the town of Greenwich at the Riverside Association's annual meeting, where First Selectman Peter Tessie presented Jim with a proclamation saying that January 20, 2011, was Dr. James Ennis Day. Jim was a very talented and giving person who will be missed by his family, his friends, and his colleagues. Mr. Moderator, we ask that these remarks be included in the minutes and that a copy be sent to his wife, Ellie. Thank you.
Will the members please rise and join me in a moment of silence in memory of Jim Ennis?[751.73][751.73](Pause). Thank you.[753.73][753.73](Pause). Now, we bid goodnight to Roger Lurie, a member of District Seven who is completing 25 years on the RTM. Valerie Stouffer, chairman of District Seven, is asked to be recognized to offer a resolution honoring Roger's long and valuable service. But before Valerie offers that formal resolution, I ask for your indulgence to offer a few words about Roger. When I was told that Roger was retiring from the RTM, I was surprised to hear that his length of service was 25 years. I, myself, am finishing 24 years, meaning that Roger and I began at approximately the same time. Yet, in my first years on the RTM, this person named Roger Lurie seemed to be in charge of many important projects. He chaired the group that organized JEMS. At the start of my fourth year on the RTM, he was elected moderator pro tem, and he chaired the special committee in the mid-'90s that affected a reorganization of our standing committee structure. I was convinced that Roger Lurie had at least 10 to 15 years more service in the RTM than I, and now I learned that he did all of these things with no more seniority than I had. My great respect for Roger was formed during my tenure on that special committee on committees that he chaired. His ability to reduce the thoughts of a very headstrong group of RTM leaders to a logical and understandable written summary was unmatched. He was tireless in his efforts, and he brought the work of that committee to a very productive end. Roger and I were among those who competed for the position of moderator in 1996. Although I was his competitor for the position, Roger encouraged me to run and told me he thought I would be great for the job. The way he treated me during that race for moderator and how he acted after losing that race was the best lesson I have had in the meaning of the word "class." Virtually every time I have run for moderator since, Roger has been the one to stand up and nominate me. I now thank Roger publicly for the support and encouragement he has given me, but more importantly, for the excellent service he has rendered to the RTM and to the town. Roger and his beautiful wife Claude, who is here tonight, have been so generous in opening their home to the members of District Seven for the most enjoyable social get-togethers, and have been so thoughtful to include my wife and I. So Roger and Claude, I thank you for everything. Valerie Stouffer.
You've said a lot of what I've said, but I think Roger deserves a full discussion from District Seven. My very special friend, Roger Lurie, has served as a member of District Seven for 25 years and now is stepping down. During his tenure, he's contributed dedication, sound judgment, and leadership to our RTM. During the past eight years, he has been the vice-chairman of our district. Many of our newer members may not realize that Roger held the position of moderator pro tem for four years, when David Tobin was the moderator. And as Tom said, he chaired the special committee to evaluate the RTM in '94 and '95. From that committee came the recommendation to eliminate the Building Committee and the combining of the Health and Social Services Committees. Not one to take an easy path regarding RTM activities and organization, he served again on the 2010 Special Committee. He contributed his business skills and experience to both the Budget Overview and to the Finance Committee, on which he served as vice-chair. He also worked behind the scenes on a variety of district and RTM initiatives. Roger brought up four children in Greenwich and had a successful career in publishing and financial management, while simultaneously serving on volunteer organization. Rogers had a special interest in leadership role in the organization now known as ABOLIS. While not sailing or spending time at his vacation home in Sharon, Rogers generously hosted, as Tom said, our famous District Seven parties. In fact, just last evening, our district members and guests exchanged political views while enjoying scenic views of District Seven from the balcony of the home of Roger and his lovely wife Claude. I'll miss Roger's astute wisdom dealing with the expertise and egos of our members. I'll miss Roger's gentle nudge during a district meeting to remind me that a speaker has droned on too many minutes. And I'll miss Roger's perennial good cheer. The value of the RTM can be measured by the quality of members, and Roger has been the gold standard. I would now like to ask Bill Galvin, our recently-elected vice-chair of District Seven, to escort Roger to the front of the auditorium so that all of us can recognize his contributions to District Seven, the representative town meeting, and to Greenwich. Roger?[1087.15][1087.15](Applause).
You may all sit down.[1123.33][1123.33](Laughter). Thank you, Tom. Thank you, Valerie. I would be less than honest if I didn't tell you I had feelings of regret and difficulties. It's very bittersweet to stand down. I will be very short, as I believe most speakers in front of the RTM should be. I have two comments. The first is, I am absolutely overwhelmed at the recognition. I had not expected it. I am delighted, and I thank you all for it, and I say that from the bottom of my heart. The second comment is that if you look at the decisions of the RTM over the last 10, 20, 30 years, as I have, you find that the great majority of decisions are well-thought-out, middle-of-the-road, intelligent decisions. Despite some of the extremes that we discuss when an issue is presented, when we finally end up voting, we end up with a common sense, intelligent, and good decision for the town of Greenwich. I think we should all be very proud of that, and I urge you to continue in that tradition. This is a wonderful organization. May it bloom forever. Thank you.[1208.65][1208.65](Applause).
All right. That now brings us to the call for tonight's meeting. I notified our district and committee chairs that, based on the suggestions we had received from our districts, I would recommend placing three items on our consent calendar, and I will do that momentarily. Those are items two, three, and four. Combining, for voting purposes, items nine and 10, which would leave to consider separately items one, five, six, seven, eight, and 11. So at this point, I will place the following items on our consent calendar. Item two is the appointment of John Sluzarz as a regular member of the Alarm Appeals Board for a term expiring March 31, 2012. Item three is the appointment of Stephen Bishop to be a regular member of the Historic District Commission for a term expiring March 31, 2012. And item four is the appointment of Darius Torabee to be an alternate member of the Historic District Commission for a term expiring March 31, 2016. Pursuant to our rules, if there's any objection to the placement of those items on our consent calendar that is supported by 20 or more members, such item that is objected to will be removed. If the items remain on the consent calendar, we will hear no committee reports or discussion on those items. Is there any objection to the placement of items two, three, and four on our consent calendar? Hearing none, will the district chairs please mark your voting cards, consent calendar, items two, three, and four, and proceed to poll your delegation. While we are voting, we'll continue with the business of the meeting. That would bring us to items that may be combined. I will again recommend, based upon the suggestions we received, that we suspend the rules to combine items nine and 10 for voting purposes. Is there such a motion to suspend the rules?
No.
It has been moved and seconded to suspend the rules to combine items nine and 10 for voting purposes. Motion to suspend the rules is not debatable and requires a two-thirds majority to pass. All those in favor of suspending the rules and combining items nine and 10 for voting purposes, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. That motion has carried. So item nine now comes before us. May we have the resolution on that item? Chris Von Keiseling, Chair of our Appointments Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, and welcome back from a nice summer, ladies and gentlemen. While you were playing around, we were working again. I know, I know. But that's your Appointments Committee. They're solid, they're good crew, they always come through. I wanted to thank them for some of the off-schedule meetings. Mark Casey, we interviewed in...
This is item nine. You're presenting...
Oh, I'm sorry. Combined, yeah. That again, that again, Mr. Moderator, was back quite a while ago. We did that at the beginning, the resolution meeting, I'm sorry. Item nine, resolved, that the following named person nominated by the Appointments Committee be appointed an alternate member of the Flood and Erosion Board for a term expiring 3/31/13, Peter J. Finkbinder.
That being offered on behalf of our Appointments Committee, it does not require a second, and is now before us. We will take up the committee reports on this item. Do you want to begin?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. We met with these gentlemen considerably long ago, at the beginning of the summer, late end of the spring, and we interviewed, we had four candidates. We had interviews and ran off the votes on them, and we came down with these two. As you recall, the RTM passed a new amendment to the charter last spring, which created two alternate positions on Flood and Erosion Control Board that did not exist before to give them both some kind of extra support and a succession plan as we go into our heavy Mr. Finkbinder, Mr. Finkbinder, excuse me, had extensive experience, as you can see, in the Explanos. What we tried to do, I won't go through all that, we included in the Explanos their full CVs and paperwork on that, so I assume that you have most of the knowledge you need from the meetings. But we approved him, nine in favor, one against, and zero abstentions. The one against, we voted for Stan Kunis and Finkbinder together. We voted on the slate, the two of nine, one, zero. I believe the one against was concerned with Mr. Stan Kunis, not Mr. Finkbinder. Thank you.
Thank you. Rick Crowell with the report of our Public Works Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Public Works Committee met last Monday evening to consider this item. Both Mr. Finkbinder and Mr. Stan Kunis were joining us, or had joined us for the meeting. We considered both of them together in our general discussions, but voted on them separately. Both candidates are the first alternates to the Flood and Erosion Control Board. A little bit of history, as Mr. Von Keiseling had pointed out, we interviewed both Mr. McLeod and Mr. Van Houten for this board back in June of 2010. During that interview process, the discussion had led to the increased amount of workload that had been pressed on the Flood and Erosion Control Board in recent times. However, discussions with the candidates had alluded to that they were not interested in increasing the size of the Flood and Erosion Control Board, but were very supportive of having alternates that would be available if there were some absenteeism, or at least be present at the meetings to learn the business that they had already started to work on and would be there for future attrition on the board. So that being said, these alternates were put into place. Kudos to our chairman of the Appointments Committee who worked on this and got this through actually relatively quickly. It's not often we make these changes to our charter so quickly, but we are very satisfied that both these candidates will be serving. We had a good interview with them, a very good candid discussion. Both candidates were asked several questions of the board, and both had come up with good answers and have extensive experience in the manner of flood and erosion and control and dams and everything that we had talked about that will be coming up in future consideration of this body as far as capital improvement projects go and correction of some of the problems we've seen in town. There was some discussion about their abilities to understand what conflict of interest or what the appearance of conflict of interest may be, as both are employed by firms in town that have done some work for the town in the past. Both candidates were very clear that they understood both a conflict of interest and even the appearance of conflict of interest. With that being said, the members of the Public Works Committee were very impressed with the candidate's credentials, and were very happy that these two well-qualified individuals would be volunteering their time and expertise to help improve the town. The votes on both, Mr. Moderator, were ten, zero, zero, with districts one and two absent. Thank you.
Thank you. Discussion on item nine. Dr. Carlson, District One.
There was remark that someone in the Appointments Committee was concerned about Mr. Stan Kunis. I don't believe anyone had any concern about any trouble for Mr. Stan Kunis, who is regarded, I believe, as a distinguished candidate.
All right. Further discussion on item nine. Mr. Porter, District Six. Again, we're talking about Mr. Finkbinder. I have not yet gotten the resolution on 10 before us.
My name is Irv Porter from District Six. I'm here to support Mr. Finkbinder, and subsequently will support the other candidate. Just a brief background. Since late 19, since late 2007, I've attended almost all of the Flood and Erosion Control Board meetings. That's because in old Greenwich, floods, drainage are problems. At least half of the proposed funding for new drainage projects are oriented toward old Greenwich. So it's incumbent upon me, I believe, to be responsive, to understand the process under which items are looked at, prioritized, and how the process moves these projects forward. It was apparent to me that the four members of the board and the fifth member, who is the first selectman... the first selectman, who have historically spent about four meetings a year—formal meetings, public meetings—needed some additional support in order to address this issue. You may remember in 2007, 2008, you passed a resolution which became part of the budget, and we will have spent nearly $2 million by the end of this fiscal year on these kinds of projects. So it was incumbent, I felt, that we needed to beef up this board, not only because of the age of the board, but because there was a limitation in some of the areas of competency. And the Appointments Committee has done an admirable job in collecting people whose composite skill set understand what's going on. But most importantly, you should understand that this board, unlike other boards, has the responsibility for establishing policy when it comes to flood and erosion control. And therefore, it would seem appropriate that in the future, we all become more familiar with the doings of this board, because this is an issue that, over the years, is certainly not going to go away. I support Mr. Finkbinder. Thank you.
Thank you. Further discussion on item nine. Item 10 now comes before us. Mr. Von Keiseling. While we are waiting for that resolution, I have the result of the vote on our consent calendar items. Those were items two, three, and four. Those in favor, 186; opposed, zero; abstaining, zero. The consent calendar items have carried. Mr. Von Keiseling.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Item 10, resolved that the following named person nominated by the Appointments Committee to be appointed an alternate member of the Flood and Erosion Control Board. And I would point out, sir, that the word "control" is missing from the item—from the statement. We perhaps would like to—it's a Scrivener's error.
All right, so that would be true for item nine as well.
It should be—yes, should be Flood and Erosion Control Board.
All right, so you're offering a sub—you were offering a substitute resolution—
If you like, sir.
—on both, correct?
Yes.
Thank you.
For a term expiring 3/31/15. Mr. John Stan Kunis.
All right, that substitute resolution being offered on behalf of our committee, it does not require a second. Mr. Von Keiseling, anything further to add on this item?
If I might—I wanted—on item nine, that'll be amended accordingly or corrected accordingly? Thank you. Again, this is what makes this town of Greenwich so great and what makes being on the Appointments Committee so great. Both these gentlemen, Stan Kunis and others—and the other two gentlemen—are superbly qualified, as I mentioned. I wanted to thank my colleague from District Six for his help and advice, too, in the process. Mr. Stan Kunis works for Malcolm Perney. Some of you may remember the Malcolm Perney name from a lot of the big projects like the sewer plant and such in town. He's a very highly—excuse me, what is the word? Paid-for consultant, and, you know, quite expensive services. We're getting all of that for free now on the Flood and Erosion Control Board, which I think is a significant savings for the town, and we should not pass that up, as well as for the other gentlemen that serve on it. There's considerable value in all of those people's time if we paid for their professional skills. Mr. Stan Kunis has had a variety of skills like Mr. Finkbinder and experience, and he has particularly been in flow, such as sewers, meaning the water sewers, not the sanitary sewers, to drain off land and to get water out of the way, the floods and such nature. And part of the problem with the Flood and Erosion Control Board is not only the river courses and such, but to take off flood areas and find ducting and sewer work for that. So he will be extremely useful in that, and I wanted to point him to. Again, we voted on him in July, I believe, nine, one, zero.
Thank you. Mr. Crowell with the Public Works Committee report.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. The report was the same as I'd given earlier. I'll just repeat, the vote for this item was ten, zero, zero, with districts one and two absent.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Discussion on item 10. Will the district chairs please mark your voting cards, combined items nine and 10, and proceed to poll your delegation? That now brings us to the separate items. We will take them up in numerical order. Item number one was a resolution postponed from our June meeting, so that is now before us. May we have the committee—and this is a resolution to appoint Paul Marchese to be a member of the Planning and Zoning Commission for a term expiring March 31, 2014. May we have the reports of the committees that considered this item? Chris Von Keiseling, Chair of our Appointments Committee.
Picking where—I picking up where I left off when I began. Mr. Marchese was interviewed by us on March 24th last spring, so he's been waiting in the wings a while. This is a case of serving until replaced, so there's been no interruption in service on the board. Mr. Marchese was an interesting interview for us in his opinions and views. He has a very—he's an architect by trade, but he has a very active thinking about the zoning regulations and bringing up the date. There are a number of things—to points that bring importance to his nomination—or renomination. One, he is the—when the P and Z broke itself up into subcommittees to look at the P O C D and to decide what would be the suggestion of the P O C D, Mr. Marchese was particularly active in the area of runoffs and lots sizes, et cetera, and is looking for a lot of initiative and modernizing, if you like, the regulations. He didn't get everything he wanted, but like everything in government, you get—you hope for the best, and he got a good bit of it. He'd like to continue tightening those regulations. His main concern, as is his co-interviewee, was that the regulations have gotten too confusing. And it's very hard for any normal person homeowner to deal with these regulations without substantial legal assistance. And he felt that these codes need to be refined and simplified—not necessarily lessened, but simplified so that homeowners for the normal projects, such as putting on a deck or a little addition to the house, could proceed on their own through the process without having a full flight of highly-paid real estate lawyers and such. So that was what—we appreciated that point of view. We voted for him, 11, 0, 1; one abstention.
Thank you. Peter Berg, Chairman of our Land Use Committee.
Good evening, Mr. Moderator, fellow members. The Land Use Committee met with Paul Marchese last Monday. Mr. Marchese, as Chris said, is an architect, a former chief architect of the World Trade Center and of the Port Authority of New York. He said he's focused on adopting regulations to limit impervious surfaces in new development in town, and that he's been focused on that goal for a number of years and feels that we are getting very close to having a new regulation on impervious surface. He also explained that he has a goal to implement a cubic feet regulation, which he believes would be more effective than FAR and simpler to administer. He explained that the use of cubic feet solves the three-dimensional problem, while FAR is only a two-dimensional approach, and has become overly complicated with many patches to address shortcomings that builders have exploited to the disadvantage of neighbors. Mr. Marchese said he has voted against several applications before P and Z. He's often the odd man when you see a vote of four to one, in some cases because the item, he felt, conflicts with the P O C D—that's our Plan of Conservation and Development—in one case recently, even though the project technically met current zoning regulations. He feels an obligation to uphold the intent of the Plan of Conservation to protect the community against inappropriate development. Our vote on Mr. Marchese was 10, 1, 1. The representative from District Seven opposed the nomination because of, quote, "inaction, lack of results of the Planning and Zoning Commission and this commissioner over eight years to implement regulations specifically outlined in the 2009 P O C D for (1) lot coverage, (2) grade planes, (3) soil fill and excavation, (4) support of state legislation for laws to curb the abusive practices of tree clearcutting." He also expressed a concern about expanding zoning variances of commercial and business zones into residential neighborhoods. He called for new people and fresh thinking in getting the P O C D implemented. So again, our vote was 10, 1, 1.
Thank you. And I think I see that District Seven member standing on the side. Peter Quigley, District Seven. This is discussion now on item one.
Good evening. I am Peter Quigley, a member of District Seven and a delegate for the Land Use Committee, and as you heard, opposed this appointment, and I ask for your consideration to do the same this evening. And I appreciate a few minutes to explain why. My vote was not for a reappointment, but rather a vote for change. I oppose not because of his volunteer service over eight years and his credentials, interestingly. I vote for the performance and the results over the past eight years, and that little legislation and regulations have been passed while on his watch. Just how effective have commissioners been sitting on this commission after eight years of the study and debate on this whole issue? The end result of ineffective regulations is that little has changed in P and C decisions on build-out and variances. Decisions remain the same. Flooding gets worse, banks everywhere. Through all the study, debate, and documents, still no regulations. So who is accountable to adopt regulations? Shouldn't we be asking for better results and different people to get better results? The RTM has a very powerful authority to approve or disapprove appointments. Isn't it time the RTM finds new people with environmental sensitivity, engineers, lawyers, or business people knowledgeable about local and state zoning laws and regulations, people who have worked in the public trust and not so closely tied into commercial real estate development? The root cause of the problems in the 2009 Plan of Conservation and Development is that we need more effective regulations and ordinances to deal with: (1) the build-out of impervious surfaces that flood backyards and basements down slope of new development; (2) the scale and size of homes, the loom to be in character of each and every village and neighborhood in this town; (3) the loss of open spaces and trees that create a lot of the water issues that exist in this town. But the solutions are all outlined in the 2009 P O C D. They're in here. This commissioner wants to replace FARs and introduce cubic feet as a system of measurement. It may be okay, and it may even be better, but why add another controversial dimension when FARs seem to work okay? What if we just add lot coverage regulations to the FAR? Add lot coverage regulations to the FAR manages the horizontal build-out. If you are unfamiliar with lot coverage, I suggest you go to the University of Connecticut's NEMO site, N-E-M-O, Nonpoint Educated Education for Municipal Officers, is the site that outlines lot coverages in the municipalities in the state of Connecticut and around this country that use this as an effective regulation to control impervious surface. (2) What if we just modify grade plane? Modify grade plane requirements to preserve the existing topography to one foot above or below the original site. Interestingly, on page nine, repeated on page 68 in the P O C D, Sections 1.2, 1.3, 1.31, 1.32, 1.33, are all the action steps that the P and Z has—was to have taken two years ago, after two years of previous study, to bring these kinds of regulations to this town. What if we just pass better soil mix guidelines for soil testing permits and for contamination? And excavation ordinances with proper inspections and enforcement to ensure sites are being filled in properly. Sound familiar? This is all in the 2009 P O C D. In fact, it's even in the 1998 Plan of Conservation and Development. But who's accountable for implementing and completing the action steps? Doesn't it start with appointments? Tonight? This is a vote for change. We need fresh thinking, different qualified people, and better performance results for a better lifestyle and quality of life in this town. Thank you very much.
Further discussion on item one. Mark Pruner, District 10.
I rise in support of Paul Marchese. As a Realtor here in town, I can tell you that the FAR rules are a nightmare. To figure out what can and can't be built now requires a choice of four professionals. You need a surveyor, you need an engineer, you need an architect, you may need a drainage professional, and a variety of other people. It is a system that has become patched and overpatched with grade plane, and we end up with weird things where you walk around in some very nice houses, and they have magnificent basements. I don't think Greenwich should be a bunch of troglodytes. I don't think you should have to live underground. At the same time, I think that you should have proper protection for the neighbors and the neighborhoods. And as anybody who's driven around and seen some of the things that have been built under the present FAR regulations, you can see, at least I don't think that's being done. And I'm not sure whether the bulk regulations that Paul Marchese is proposing is the exact answer. The devil is always in the detail. But I do want someone who is willing to consider some different options to remedy the situation that has become overly complicated. Thank you.
Further discussion on item one. Will the district chairs please mark your voting cards, item number one, and proceed to poll your delegation? I have the result of the vote on combined items nine and 10. Those in favor, 187; opposed, two; abstaining, zero. Those combined items have carried. The next separate item to come before us is item number five. May we have John Creary, Town Administrator.
Resolved that the First Selectman is authorized to accept Homeland Security grant from the federal government for the purchase of a multipurpose public safety boat at a cost of $600,000, and to approve the appropriation of these funds to fund F Department 2138 Police, Object 59250, and Project 12199.
Thank you. Will a member please move the adoption of the resolution? Resolution on item five has been moved and seconded. Evan Delman, Chair of our Town Services Committee.
Good evening. Your Town Services Committee met on Tuesday night. We have Lieutenant Brown from the Police Department with us. The grant that will pay for this boat was filed by the Greenwich Fire Department, but it will come under the domain of the Greenwich Police Department. It will extend the life of our other two boats by spreading out their use, and the boat will have the ability to detect weapons of mass destruction and provide limited firefighting abilities. The fire union is expected to provide little interference with the police acting as firefighters, but that would need to go through the normal arbitration process. It is unknown if OSHA will require the additional education and testing of the police officers assigned to the boat. The town will have the right to turn the boat over to the federal government and walk away after three years. The only stipulation is that in accepting the grant, our officers may be called upon to respond anywhere that they are needed if required by the Department of Homeland Security. We voted 11, 0, 0. District Two is absent.
Gordon Ennis, Chair of our Finance Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Ladies and gentlemen, Finance Committee met on Monday night in the Town Hall Lounge. All districts were represented except District Five. This item was well-presented in the explanatory comments. The following officials were present to comment on the item: John Creary, from the Office of the First Selectman, John Brown and Mark Cordick from the Greenwich P.D., and Dan Marzowa, emergency preparedness— Dan Marzola, emergency preparedness. The essential issues are these: The boat is free to the town. Total operating costs will increase, and those costs are estimated to increase at about $8,000 per year. There's no change in staffing, anticipated, planned, or designed. The total scope of the responsibility of the town has changed under the new rules presented by the Homeland Security Department. Essentially now, in addition to the Greenwich Harbor area, we also have a part of Long Island Sound to patrol, and we will respond to other communities if a situation requires it and if it's ordered by Homeland Security. So the boat is also part of the overall defense and response plan for this part of the country. All coastal communities will be involved at some point in time. Most of the coastal communities along the sound are already involved. Our vote was eleven, zero, zero. Thank you.
Thank you. Discussion on item five. Will the district chairs please mark your voting cards, item number five, and proceed to poll your delegation? Item six now comes before us. This is the referral of a municipal improvement application. The referral was affected by filing by owners of real property and effectively made the R T M the decision-maker on this municipal improvement application. Wayne Fox, our town attorney, will present the resolution that we will be acting on tonight. Wayne Fox, our town attorney.
Whereas an application per Section 99 of the Town of Greenwich Charter, having been filed by Alan Minelli, Superintendent of B C and M Division, authorized agent for the Town of Greenwich to demolish the existing fire station and construct a new fire station at fifteen Havemeyer Place, and whereas under Section 100 of the Town of Greenwich Charter, such application has been referred to the representative town meeting, it is hereby resolved that the application per Section 99 for a municipal improvement to demolish the existing fire station and to construct a new fire station on a 19,165 square foot property located at fifteen Havemeyer Place is hereby approved.
Will a member please move the adoption of the resolution? Resolution on item six has been moved and seconded. May we have the reports of the committees that considered this item, beginning with our Finance Committee report and its chairman, Gordon Ennis.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Ladies and gentlemen, the Finance Committee voted zero, eleven, zero. District Five absent on this item. The item was presented by Joseph Kantorski and Paul Puglisi from the Greenwich Preservation Trust and Josephine Convoy, a town resident. They are seeking to block the demolition of the central fire station by appealing its M I status for reasons stated in their appeal. Speaking in defense of the current plan of demolition were John Wetmore, Assistant Town Attorney, Alan Minelli, and Peter Tessie. The presentations were made to a joint meeting of the Finance, Land Use, and Legislative and Rules Committees in the Town Hall Meeting Room. After thirty-five minutes of discussion, the Finance Committee returned to the lounge to conclude its regular meeting. There was very little discussion except to define, for the sake of voting, that a yes vote would support the appeal and a no vote would allow the M I to stand and the current project to go forward as planned. Therefore, our vote of eleven, of zero, eleven, zero means that the committee supports the M I and chooses to let this project go forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Peter Berg with our Land Use Committee report.
Good evening again. Excuse me. So as Mr. Ennis just explained, we had a joint meeting of the Land Use Legislative Rules, D P W, and Finance Committees to take up this item of M I for the central fire station, presented by resident taxpayer Joe Convoy, who opposes the demolition of the building. Town Council John Wetmore explained that under our town charter, Section 99, the Planning and Zoning Commission is required to grant municipal improvement status to any project involving a town property. In order to grant M I status, the Planning and Zoning Commission must find that the proposed project is consistent, or at least not inconsistent, with the town's plan of conservation and development. Under Section 100, any resident taxpayer in town may refer an M I to the R T M. This is not an appeal, but rather a new hearing. The charter does not specify any test that the R T M must apply in granting an M I or denying M I status. Ms. Convoy and fellow members of the Greenwich Preservation Trust, Joseph Kantorski and Paul Puglisi, then addressed the meeting. They made a case for preserving the building. Mr. Puglisi cited numerous statements in the P O C D that support preserving historic buildings in town and especially in the center of our downtown. The preservation position is that the P O C D takes priority over the function of the central fire station. If the central fire station program cannot be safely or adequately incorporated into the historic structure, then an alternative site should be found, but the P O C D emphasizes preservation. The preservation position on the proposed design is that any replica replacing the legacy of our historic traditions of use and design would not suffice. A part of our history will be erased, and that no replication can equal the original. Alan Minelli of the Department of Public Works then presented the case for demolishing the building. The current building does not meet state building code. To bring the building up to code would involve extensive reconstruction, the cost of which would exceed a new building. Following his presentation, I asked the town representatives how the demolition is consistent with the P O C D. The town representatives were unable to cite any specific language in support of demolition. Ann Young, Chair of the Historic District Commission, said that the building is protected by federal guidelines. She noted that the Planning and Zoning Commission has not asked the Historic District Commission to review the project yet. First Selectman Peter Tessie and Fire Chief Peter Suzinski, sorry if I mangled that, summarized and supported the demolition plans. They made a compelling argument citing the need to bring the building up to code standards, keeping the historic functions in place with design replication, and providing for the health, safety, morale, and well-being of firemen charged with protecting the lives and the property values in town and residential assets in Central Greenwich. Our vote on this was in favor of the M I, that is, in favor of demolition, with seven in favor and five opposed. Districts one, two, four, eight, and nine opposed. Those opposed cited demolition, that demolition is inconsistent with the 2009 P O C D, and that the Land Use Committee needs to uphold the P O C D. The member from District Nine added that he would be willing to pay additional taxes to preserve the building. So again, seven in favor, five opposed.
Thank you. Before getting our next report, I do have the result of the vote on item number one, the appointment of Paul Marchese to the Planning and Zoning Commission. Those in favor, one fifty-three; opposed, thirty; abstaining, five. That item has carried. Continuing with item number six, Doug Wells, Chair of our Legislative and Rules Committee.
Mr. Moderator, ladies and gentlemen, as Mr. Berg pointed out, we took this item up jointly last Monday evening. I think Mr. Berg should get some recognition for the way that he put this together. He brought the committees together. He put forth a procedure by which all of the speakers had ample opportunity to discuss their position, and he did it in a timely manner. So thank you, Mr. Berg, for making this work so well. I won't go over what Mr. Berg said. He was at the meeting, as was I, and he covered the ground pretty well. I will indicate one other thing that Mr. Tessie had said, and that is that while he acknowledged that the P O C D does favor historical preservation, he wanted to point out that the P O C D is a guiding document, and it is also necessary to take into account engineering realities when we upgrade our public safety structures. After hearing in the joint meeting for approximately one hour, Legislative and Rules left the joint meeting and completed our agenda in our conference room, members of our committee were thankful that the Greenwich Preservation Trust brought these issues to the attention of the R T M. They've addressed a legitimate concern because the town should always be made aware of alternatives to demolition of our landmark buildings. However, our committee unanimously believed that the functionality of a fire station is far more important than preservation of an integrated building. We cannot hamstring our fire department from doing its job efficiently. We took two votes on the matter. Our first vote was as to legal order, and as Mr. Berg pointed out, Mr. Wetmore gave the opinion that this, in fact, was a citizen's appeal, and it was the appropriate way to bring the matter to the R T M so that we could look at this matter anew. Our vote as to legal order was nine, zero, one, with Districts Four and Seven absent. Our vote on the merits was, we took the vote exactly backwards, as did Finance. Our vote was zero in favor, nine opposed, with one abstention, but this vote, in fact, translated into approval of Planning and Zoning Decision to approve the municipal improvement.
Thank you. Evan Delman with the Town Services Report.
Good evening again. Mr. Minelli was the representation for the Town of Greenwich. There was no representation from the opposing side. Also in attendance was the First Selectman, the Fire Chief, and Deputy Chief. The construction of the existing fire department building, as explained to us, is obsolete. It would need extensive retrofitting in order to bring it up to current code, and the code is even more stringent since it's an emergency facility. It is now held together using gravity and friction, and if we did retrofit the building, the existing limestone facade would need to be recut and some blocks replaced. The underlying unstable brick would then require additional reinforcement and bracing. However, even if that was done, the turning radius for fire apparatus is still too large to safely maneuver without changing the existing footprint of the building. All of those factors would add millions of dollars to the project, but it could be done effectively and safely. We voted eleven, zero, zero. District Two absent. We voted in favor of the M I, not the opposing side.
Thank you. And Rick Crowell with the report of our Public Works Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. The Public Works Committee also met jointly with the other committees. Just to pick up on a few things, Public Works kind of focused on three primary areas during consideration. First was the P O C D. The town attorney had stated that once the M I is referred to the R T M, all issues that are relevant to the M I may be considered. He did caution us that the zoning regulations and other areas that are more legally and technically advanced should probably be taken a little bit more lightly, but they could be considered in all of our discussions and should be well-vetted. It was pointed out that there is no section of the charter which states that the M I must be consistent with the P O C D once it's referred to the R T M. However, members of the Preservation Trust did quote and pointed out several sections of the P O C D which strongly encourage the preservation of historic buildings, something that I believe many members of the Public Works Committee are strongly in support of. However, if you do look into the P O C D, in its Town Facilities Management sections, I'll quote, "The Greenwich has recently affirmed its commitment to public safety through a $33 million appropriation for the police and emergency parts of the public safety facility, with more to come when the fire department is rebuilt. This facility has been designed to meet the current and future needs of the community. The fire department building upgrade is scheduled to be completed after the police department facility is completed." So with that being said, we had determined that the P O C D kind of covered both bases, and the M I was consistent with the P O C D. When we considered our next step was to look at the preservation of the building, and based on the data that was provided to us by our Public Works Department, which had explained what would be required in order to technically preserve the building, and getting an explanation of the building code from the town's consultant in the joint meeting, the consultant explained that there are really four levels to the building code. Level one being the most liberal, if you will, and is usually reserved for storage buildings and things of that nature, and level four is a building that is built to withstand a catastrophic event. Withstand, not, you know, just a little damage, to withstand a catastrophic event. And that is what the current fire building is being constructed at a level four, so that would withstand a catastrophic event and be a place of safety if the town had an emergency. The consultant stated that even if this building were to be, used to be changed to, say, a teen center or even a museum, that the building would still have to conform to a level-two or level-three building code standard, and may even be brought into stricter restrictions if we had a change of use. With that being said, we further reviewed the nuts and bolts of it, as we do in Public Works, and looked at what would have to be done to reconstruct the building, and it was determined that with the removal of the facade, the implementation of a new interior structure of steel girders and beams, a new roof, all new mechanicals, heat, electric, plumbing, new walls, A D A compliance, by the time we were done with this building, there really wasn't a lot left to preserve. And we weren't preserving a building, but we were, in essence, constructing a new building. Further consideration and discussion was based on relocation. Could we relocate this somewhere else, even if we had to do the extensive renovation? And the discussion was very short in this area because that was really not what was before us at this point in time. This was an M I. And that we had determined earlier that if we did have to basically rebuild this building, that this was the site to put a fire station in close proximity to the fire, to the police station, and, in a sense, it was then conforming with the P O C D, which had directed us to complete the public safety complex. With that being said, the committee voted zero, ten, zero, in keeping with the votes of the other committees. The ten votes were, in essence, in favor of the M I as it was presented, with Districts One and Two absent. Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Thank you. Discussion on item six. Now, I see interested speakers moving towards the front. Mr. Puglisi, are you going to start? Josephine Convoy.
Good evening, members of the R T M and fellow citizens. I'm Joe Convoy from the Greenwich Preservation Trust, and it is the mission of the Greenwich Preservation Trust to advocate and educate for the preservation of our cultural and historic landmarks in Greenwich. It was our impression the town's goal was the same. The P O C D tells us repeatedly to protect our, quotes, "historic and cultural resources", end quotes. We are here this evening to advocate for the preservation of our central fire station. This building is part of the municipal central fire station. This building is part of the municipal center historic district, and furthermore, on the National Register of Historic Places. It represents an Artyco style. It is part of an era after World War I that was industrial in design, exploding in style of a nervous energy and modernism. Would the town tolerate the destruction of the post office, World War memorials, the old town hall, and Havemeyer Building, which are all in this municipal center historic district? We cannot pick and choose which historic register buildings we want to tear down. The town must lead by example. We are allowed by the zoning regulations to build a larger police facility than permitted by promising to preserve the firehouse. Now, if the building no longer works for the fire department, then we should find reuse for the historic central firehouse. It is as uncomplicated as that. Paul Puglisi will address consistency with the P O C D, some thoughts on the reuse of historic firehouse, and on alternative locations. historic firehouse, and an alternative location for a new one. Joe Kantorski will speak to this next.
Mr. Kantorski.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, and I want to thank everyone here for the opportunity to speak. My name's Joseph Kantorski, and I'm a member of the Greenwich Preservation Trust and resident of Greenwich, and I believe that the central firehouse, an historically significant structure, a part of the municipal center historic district, should not be demolished. It should be preserved. If it can no longer serve its intended use, it should be adaptively reused and a new location found for the firehouse. To demolish the central firehouse would be to deny its historic and cultural importance in the worst possible way. A large part of what makes our town so special is that we've had the foresight and the good sense over the years to recognize and preserve our history as expressed in our landmark structures. We are here tonight to make the case that the M I under consideration is inconsistent with the town's plan of conservation and development. The P O C D seeks to honor this special place we call home. It points the way. It sets goals. It expresses who we are as a town and where we want to be now and in the future. Some refer to the P O C D as an advisory document. Some advice is worth listening to, and some isn't. I'm convinced that the advice given in our P O C D is well worth listening to. The time and effort that went into its creation should not be dismissed. The P O C D is very clear. It says in its prologue that, quote, "Changes in Greenwich must be motivated by and addressed to our quality of life choices, and not motivated by chance or economic motivation." The P O C D also includes among its goals that the town should, quote, "continue, initiate, and encourage development that preserves a sense of community around historic centers, schools, and other institutions." These are but two quotes from the P O C D of the 20 quotes that we presented at last week's R T M joint committee meetings that deal with preserving our quality of life and keeping Greenwich a viable and vibrant community. But tonight, you are being asked to approve an M I that calls for the central firehouse to be demolished, even though nowhere in the P O C D and in its many words can we find the word demolish. The M I does not conform to the P O C D, and it should not be approved. The firehouse is one of six buildings in the municipal center historic district. The others include the Havah Meyer Building, the old town hall, our current town hall, the main post office, and the old Mason Street School. These buildings span the years 1893 to 1937. They speak to us every day about our past and our passage from a farming community to a town that had indeed arrived. They are solid expressions of a great civic pride that I believe we still have and that we must preserve. Four of those buildings are excellent examples of adaptive reuse. In fact, the old Mason Street School has been adaptively reused by the town no less than four times since its construction in 1905. Our position has always been that if the firehouse can no longer serve the town as a firehouse, it should not be demolished. It should be adaptively reused like these buildings that I've mentioned. We can do this if we have the will to do it. There's no reason not to do it this time. A fellow member of the Greenwich Preservation Trust, Paul Poyezzy, will present what I believe is a well-thought-out alternative plan that addresses our need for a new fire station. The town has an excellent opportunity here to lead by example and preserve, continue to preserve, our historic resources. Demolishing the central firehouse sets a dangerous precedent for other historic district structures and threatens to damage the quality and the character of our downtown. I believe the town should reexamine its options, reaffirm its commitment to the P O C D's goals, and preserve the central firehouse. Again, I thank you for the time, and here's Paul Poyezzy.
Mr. Poyezzy.
Good evening, Mr. Moderator, members of the R T M. Thank you for the opportunity to speak here tonight. You've heard about how the P O C D, the destruction of the firehouse is inconsistent with the P O C D, and in the past, I've spoken on many occasions to, in favor of preserving the firehouse. We've been told that the P O C D is only advisory, that there are no alternatives to demolition, that the cost differential is $9 million, that the cost of reusing the building will be the same as renovating it for the firehouse, and that we cannot relocate the firehouse because we can't afford to buy the land, that the current firehouse in its configuration does not function to meet the needs of the modern fire department. Basically, that there are no feasible alternatives. So rather than continuing to criticize the path that we're on, we thought that it would be worthwhile to just explore one possible feasible alternative. And you probably can't see it from there, but Mr. Manelli's always had his visual aids, so I thought we would bring some visual aids. And basically, this is one alternative, I'm sure there are others, but this is the Island Beach parking lot on Steamboat Road. This is the eastern side of the parking lot, facing the Bruce Museum and Steamboat Road. We basically superimposed the proposed new firehouse plan onto that site. It would obviously be configured a little differently if one were to consider that site and its characteristics, but it does fit on the site. The area above it would be fire department parking. This would be built at the same level as Field Point, as Steamboat Road, so you would drive out onto Steamboat Road at that level, so it's out of the flood plain. And it has some significant benefits, one being that there's no land cost, another that we get to preserve the existing firehouse, another, compliance with zoning regulations and past preservation promises, compliance with the P O C D, enhancement and potential revenue from an underutilized parking lot, including the potential for more parking and possibly retail around the edge, easy fire access to I-95 and Central Greenwich, avoidance of downtown congestion for enhanced response times, resolution of functional issues such as turning radius and apron size, no need to build an expensive temporary firehouse, possible sale or long-term lease of the old firehouse to help pay for the new one, and possible reuse of the old firehouse for JEMs, the Board of Ed, or senior center. And this site could also accommodate JEMs with the fire department, which was the original plan. In summary, preservation is not convenient, is not expedient, is not without cost, but as leaders and residents of this town, we've been entrusted with protecting our historic resources. History will show whether despite adversity, economic or otherwise, that we did the right thing. We cannot say it's okay to ignore the P O C D this time. It's okay to ignore the zoning regulations and zoning laws this time. It's okay to demolish a historic register building this time because of what may happen next time. We're asking you to ask the hard questions, demand alternatives, and never let us consider demolishing a town-owned historic resource again. Thank you.
Thank you. Before continuing with the discussion, I have the result of the vote on item number five. That was the acceptance of a $600,000 grant and appropriation of those funds for the purchase of a boat. Those in favor, 166; opposed, 19; abstaining, three. That item has carried. Further discussion on item six. Mr. Buttel, District Eight.
I'm not Mr. Buttel, but can I speak, or do I have to register my name somewhere?
I will recognize you after Mr. Buttel.
More attractive than I am, right?
Yes.
The last three speakers have all made the statement that the proposed M I is in conflict with the P O C D. That's a statement of opinion, not a statement of fact. Your Planning and Zoning Commission has determined otherwise. This body is charged with making the final decision. Your chairman, Mr. Crowell, from my district, has already stated that one of the charges in the P O C D is to complete the public safety complex. So the P O C D is not fully determined. It is in conflict with itself. To create my bona fides just for you a little bit, let me say that when Lolly Prince was the first electman, she charged me with the duty of chairing the Palmerance Talkman Committee, which, when we purchased the Palmerance property, we got the Seton House and the Contemporary House and had to determine what we were going to do with them. And we sent one R F P out that didn't permit housing and went through six months of spinning our wheels, and then had to send a second P O C, or second R F P out, and we wound up with Abilis, at the time, A R C, coming in and creating housing in the Contemporary House. But to this day, the Seton House sits vacant. To those who would suggest alternative uses for the firehouse, I would tell you, 10 years from now, that building will be sitting vacant. The cost of bringing it up to code and the rest, not to the town, but to whoever might be the tenant, and that's what we ran into in the Seton House, would be prohibitive. To those who say, locate the firehouse elsewhere, well, we have located the firehouse elsewhere. This body voted either its last meeting or two meetings ago for a temporary facility in the Island Beach parking lot, across from the Boys and Girls Club. Horse Snack Lot, I'm sorry. It's across from the Boys and Girls Club. We are temporarily closing that firehouse and relocating the staff. The most or easiest way to preserve, we all read in the paper last week that the post office has now been sold to a local resident who chairs a real estate group. If you want to preserve the central business district and the rest of that historic buildings in that central business district, you know the best way to do it? Make sure it doesn't burn down. And if we want to make sure it doesn't burn down, we'd better have a central fire station. I've been on this body for 25 years. How long has District Ten now been fighting for a backcountry fire station? How long have I been trying to get something into the Seton House? How long did it take us to finally figure out what we were going to do with the school in North Myannis and get Bridge School in there? It would be easy for us to say, yeah, you're right, let's keep the historic nature of the town of Greenwich. And trust me, I grew up in this town. I remember when Greenwich Avenue was one-way. I loved the historic nature of Greenwich. Two-way, I'm sorry. Two-way when we had the Pickwick Arms Hotel. You're correct. I remember the day it went one-way and the same woman, three days in a row, turned up the avenue, and eventually the police department had to put a police officer at the bottom to say, stop. But we, too many projects in this town just die on the vine. We need to move forward with this building. I was not a huge fan of this police palace slash fire palace. If you remember, when Jim Lash was the first electman, I stood up here and said, does doing the police building mean we have to do the fire building? And he said, no. But it was planned as a two-phase project. I would love to be able to restore the building, but let me just remind you what happened with Hamilton Avenue School. One of the reasons we ran into such delays with Hamilton Avenue School is we wanted to maintain the facade of the building. We didn't plant a head for the underground parking in the back of the building, and that building took much longer to complete than it needed to take to complete. This is a project that, as much as I hate to see our downtown developing this way, we need to move forward with, and we need to move forward with it tonight. I hope you'll vote to sustain the P and Z decision on the M I. Thank you.
Further discussion on item six. Yes, ma'am.
Good evening. I am, my name is Elise Hillman-Green, and I am here tonight as a concerned citizen. The easy way out would be to vote to raise the historic central firehouse and to build a replica, replica in its place. I am here tonight to implore you not to take the easy way out. It is not an either-or situation. I know that many, many residents in town, and many of you, agree with me that we must find a way to save our firehouse. Our firemen do deserve the best. Ideally, they deserve to be in a beautifully restored, meaningful, historic building. Let's create a building that honors our town's past but incorporates the needs of today's firefighter. A state-of-the-art interior encapsulated in historic and classic facade. With extra square footage made available now that the police have vacated, we need to find a feasible way to rework the firehouse, maybe sacrifice something internally to meet the budget that everyone is expecting. I would hope that our firemen could remain where their forbears slept and ate and sweat, but if not, we must find them the best place to continue their all-important work, while we also find the best use for preserving and adapting our iconic firehouse. We all know that across America and around the world, original firehouses are celebrated as the crown jewel of their towns. Every great town and city has preserved their firehouse. They are the fabric and epicenter of that area's history and are usually beautiful and/or interesting buildings, as is ours. Does this new code requirement mean that all firehouses in Connecticut will be torn down and rebuilt? I would seriously doubt that. The 2009 Plan of Conservation and Development, something that you all and P and Z helped create and endorsed, guides you in handling situations just like this. This is an extensive document that was ratified just two years ago. Are you going to tell us that it is already obsolete? Isn't it a waste of time and energy to produce such a detailed and well-organized report only to label it as advisory and disregard it as an important decision-making tool? There are numerous references to preserving our six, only six, downtown buildings. You all endorsed the P O C D. You voted for just this. You had the vision already. You had the foresight. You have the document that can save our firehouse from the wrecking ball. Our town needs a set an example of valuing our past. Other towns are watching us as our developers. This is a precedent-setting moment. We are all charged with doing our best to preserve, at the very least, this special section of downtown. If we disregard that this building is part of a national historic district as well as in our municipal historic district, then we have neglected our duties as keepers and caretakers of history. We, the people, are counting on you to do just that for us. I thank you tonight for the opportunity to speak, and I thank you, thank you to the firemen, who are the true heroes of our town. May we find them a home. Thank you.
Evan. Evan Delman, District Nine.
Good evening again. I'm here as a member of District Nine, not as your chairman of town services. You have a picture of here where the fire station can go. Great. You're not just moving the fire station, you're increasing its response time by several minutes. This station doesn't only respond to Central Greenwich. It responds to Glenville, Byram, Roundhill, Cos Cob, Old Greenwich, everywhere in town. North Street. You're moving it three minutes farther away. And three minutes isn't a lot, unless it's your house that's on fire.
Further discussion on item six. Yes, sir.
Hi. My name is Richard Newman. I'm a member of District Eleven. I'm also the assistant chief of the Amagerone Fire Company, which lives in Station One. We are a group of people who, if you think about firemen, we love history. None of us, 50-year members that I've talked to, want to have this station renovated. We want a new house, something that fits what we do, fits our job. I appreciate this. Did you look that our fire truck can't fit up Steamboat Road? We can't go north on that under the trestle.
Mr. Newman, if you could address all comments to the chair, I'd appreciate that.
I appreciate all the plans. This was not done in a vacuum. It's been worked for years and years. I've been listening to it from, for four or five years now, since we were asked to leave the station. We had to go to Byram so we could accommodate the rebuilding of the police station and what's going on now. But again, these plans, people keep showing them to me. I've seen them for years. Great ideas. Our fire truck does not fit up this road. Thank you.
Further discussion on item six.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I'm C.C. Morgan from District Two. I have the disconcerting feeling that we have gotten somehow off track here. The issue at hand is whether to approve or not approve the MI for the fire station. And these people have come here to address that, but something else has been added, which seems to be a possible alternative plan for where the fire station might be located. It seems to me that these are two different issues, and they've somehow become clouded together. And I think we need to separate them at this point. I appreciate your bringing your design. It certainly is, it's interesting. I don't think it's very feasible because of the flooding in that area and the fact that most of that district has often voted against having anything built there, but that's not the issue. The issue is, do we want to approve the MI or not?
They should know. They held public hearings. New information tonight. Without getting into a discussion about the glass is half-full or half-empty, again, keep it simple. The POCD and the quality of life. The basic quality of life issue is the ability of our community to feel secure in their homes and business. That conforms with the POCD. Preserve the integrity of our districts. Very prominent feature in the POCD. I would venture to say that our fire stations are the hub of our districts. Just look recently at what's happened in those stations, whether it's been dedicating a piece of artifact steel from the World Trade Centers in Glenville, whether it's a book fair at the Cos Cob Fire Station, filling sandbags at the Sound Beach or Byram Station. These fire stations are the hub of our community, but it's not only the structure, it's the men and women who serve as part of the community. The central station is the hub, and it's the safe house. It's the neighbor of the central district. We are in Central Greenwich. That station is our identity. We've talked about code issues and not being in conformance as a basis against this MI. Code issues are moot point. I believe your committees voted 50 to five over the past week in our attendance. Those five no votes, we probably had more consultants, architects, and engineers present to answer questions than those five no votes. But they're necessary. They're necessary for this body, who gave us a mandate two years ago, to come back with better defined information and a plan. The town has done that. My simple experience is codes are based on past tragedies, any code that's out there. We shouldn't be looking for ways to circumvent the code. This is a building that I want standing in the face of a disaster. This is the one I want our responders to be able to respond out of. This is the one I want our community to recognize as being there, that they can rely on it. And oddly enough, those codes that have been challenged over the past several months, we've had the rumble of a seismic event here in town. We've dodged a major wind event with Tropical Storm Irene. We should be heeding the warnings of these tragedies. We have an opportunity here, I'll say, to save $9 million, but more importantly, we can remediate the inherent deficiencies of this building and move forward with a building that will create efficiencies. So when I said at the beginning, I stand here before you to ask for your vote, it's not just as the vote of the fire chief, representative of our firefighters, not firemen, firemen and women who serve this town, but I also ask on behalf of the other group of individuals. When you look at the oath that binds us to service, those citizens of the town of Greenwich have the expectation that we are going to continue to protect their most basic need to feel secure in the town of Greenwich. Again, I ask for your continued support. Thank you.
Lucy Krasner, District Five.
I'll be brief. I went and looked at this firehouse and stood there for quite some time recently to really see if I agreed with the preservationists who spoke before you tonight, that this was a building worth saving, and I do not think it is. You can stare at this building all you like. It does not seem special. It does not seem part of our cultural heritage. And I think we need to really serve our firefighters, get something that is going to meet their needs in the future, not get smaller trucks, but rather what is the state-of-the-art trucks, and move forward to demolish the building and build a suitable firehouse. I took a tour through this building a few years ago when RTM members were encouraged to do that. It is unbelievably awful inside. And to keep this building for something that I don't think, and I've lived here 40 years, that is a long time. I didn't just get here in town. And I have never felt that this firehouse was part of my cultural heritage of living here. So I think these people spoke very beautifully and poetically, but I think not of our century. And I think we need to move on and meet our current needs and demolish the building.
Will the district chairs please mark your voting cards, item number six, and proceed to poll your delegation? Item number seven now comes before us. All right. Oh, 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 hold on, hold on. Yes. The vote here is the vote on the resolution read by Mr. Fox. Let me read it to you. All right. If you are in favor of approving the municipal improvement, you vote yes. If you want to reject the municipal improvement, you vote no. Item seven now comes before us. Diane Fox, our town planner.
Good evening, Mr. Moderator, fellow RTM members. I rise to ask for the following resolution to be adopted, and I will read it as follows. Resolved that the additional appropriation of $24,835 for fiscal year 2011-12 be and the same is hereby appropriated to be added to the account number A161-51300 and A90-157050, known as zoning enforcement board of appeals, for permanent part-time salaries and social security services.
Thank you. Will a member please move the adoption of the resolution? Resolution on item seven has been moved and seconded. Gordon Ennis with the report of our finance committee.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Ladies and gentlemen, the finance committee voted 11-0-0 on this item. It was presented by Katie Blankley, deputy director, assistant town planner. The essential points are the following. The total annual cost of the proposed new permanent part-time employee is $24,835 in the first year. This employee will process building permits under the new permit procedures. The additional capacity will allow the zoning enforcement officers to prosecute their duties more actively. Finally, the additional enforcement action and the permit process improvement will generate more permit and enforcement revenue for the town. As a matter of fact, Ms. Blankley indicated that so far in this fiscal year, revenue has passed $85,000. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Ennis. And I would ask that our district chairs conduct the voting as quietly as possible, and if members need to talk, that they do so outside the hall. Peter Berg with the land use committee report on item number seven.
Thank you. And land use also...
All right. Excuse me.
I'm sorry to interrupt.
Mr. Diddakis.
Speaker, we have a debate on how to vote here. Can you reiterate the vote?
If you are in favor of the municipal improvement application, you vote yes. If you want to reject it and send the project back to square one, you vote no. Are we clear on this? Yes to knock the building down is another way of saying it. Mr. Berg.
So, um, so last Monday, Katie Blankley, our assistant town planner, also appeared at the land use committee and told us the same thing that Gordon Ennis just reported on, which is that this part-time position is going to free up the zoning enforcement officer to spend more time in the field, and that the incremental application fees that are being collected through this process far exceed the cost of this position. Our vote on this item was 12-0-0.
Thank you. Discussion on item seven. Seeing none, I will ask the district chairs to please mark your voting cards. We now have two votes pending. This is on item number seven, and proceed to poll your delegation. While we are voting, we will continue. The next item is item number eight. David Detchin, Chair of our Labor Contracts Committee.
Mr. Moderator, this is, item eight is a sense of the meeting resolution offered by unanimous vote of the Labor Contracts Committee. The preamble and the resolution are as they appear in the call.
Thank you. That being offered on behalf of one of our committees, it does not require a second. And to summarize, this is a sense of the meeting resolution asking our state legislative representatives to offer legislation so that the RTM would be part of the approval process for collective bargaining agreements with all collective bargaining units in town. Currently, the non-certified members who report to the Board of Ed, those contracts are not reviewed by the RTM. All right. That now is before us, that sense of the meeting resolution. Mr. Detchin.
This is, Mr. Moderator, this is a report of the Labor Contracts Committee. As was announced at our representative town meeting in June, your Labor Contracts Committee voted unanimously to propose this sense of the meeting resolution, or SOMR, to the RTM at this September meeting, so that the RTM could take a position, one way or another, on the fact that the Connecticut Municipal Employees Relation Act, or MIRA, reserves to the Board of Education, rather than to the RTM, the ratification of any collective bargaining agreement with any union in regard to employees who are not certified teachers, but who are nevertheless employed by the Board of Education. That includes the appropriation or allocation of funding required in connection with implementing that collective bargaining agreement. This issue came up, as you may recall, at our June meeting in the context of Little Launa. As the preamble to the SOMR notes, Section 7474B, as in boy, of MIRA, generally reserves to the RTM the authority to approve funds necessary to implement the terms of collecting bargaining agreements between the town and its employees. That's the standard rule, basically. However, Section 7474D establishes an exception to that general rule for non-certified municipal employees employed by the Board of Education. Since we know that the moderator and others within the RTM are quite concerned about the scope of the RTM's authority in regard to fiscal matters, we on your Labor Contracts Committee thought it appropriate to submit this issue to the entire RTM for consideration. And for that reason, we submitted, or we offered this SOMR. Of course, as in the case of all sense of the meeting resolutions, this SOMR would have no legal effect as such. It is intended merely to request the state senator and the state representatives representing voters in Greenwich to submit a bill to the Connecticut legislature that would amend MIRA to eliminate the exception for non-certified town employees working for the Board of Education. That being said, let me mention, in the interest of full disclosure, that there is a certain logic to this exception, and why it's in MIRA as an exception to the general authority of the RTM to appropriate funds to implement collective bargaining agreements for town employees. Specifically, as a matter of legislative policy, the state legislature has provided considerable fiscal autonomy to boards of education in this state. As an example of this, you will recall that although the BET and the RTM can fix the total amount of the Board of Education's annual budget, the BET and the RTM are not permitted to tell the Board of Education how to allocate the approved budgetary amount among the various posts of the BOE budget. This authority is left to the discretion of the Board of Education. The exception in MIRA to the RTM's power to allocate funds to implement collective bargaining agreements for certain employees of the Board of Education appears to reflect this legislative policy. Specifically, if the RTM had the power to deny funding to implement collective bargaining agreements in regard to municipal employees employed by the BOE, then the RTM would have indirectly the ability to tell the BOE how to allocate appropriated funds, at least in regard to non-certified municipal employees. This could be seen as a contradiction to the state legislature's stated policy of granting the Board of Education considerable fiscal autonomy. Your Labor Contracts Committee has no desire to get into the middle of the philosophical, some might even say theological, debate that broke out at the June RTM over whether the RTM should take any position on improving collective bargaining agreements which do not require an appropriation of funds. Suffice it to say that under the current language of MIRA, the allocation of funds to implement a new CBA is the prerogative of the Board of Education, not the RTM, when it comes to these non-certified employees. As noted, your Labor Contracts Committee voted to submit this SOMR in regard to MIRA to the RTM for your consideration. The vote was unanimous, which means that even of those of us in the Labor Contract Committee who are not big fans of sense of the meeting resolutions, and I think you know that I'm one of those, we nevertheless thought that the RTM ought to have the opportunity to consider and vote on whether... to consider and vote on whether we should be requesting our legislators to eliminate this exception. I would mention that some of us on the Labor Contracts Committee may find the logic behind this exception compelling, and as members of this RTM, rather than members of the Labor Contracts Committee, may well vote against this SOMR. On the other hand, there are others on the Labor Contracts Committee who feel that the need to preserve the prerogatives of the RTM in the fiscal matters take priority, and they will vote for this SOMR. In short, your Labor Contracts Committee voted to submit this matter to the RTM, but the LCC did not take a position specifically whether to endorse a vote for or against this particular SOMR. We're leaving that to the discretion of the RTM itself.
Bob Brady, Chairman of our Education Committee.
Good evening. The Education Committee met last Monday night to consider this item. Josh Brown, a member of both Education Committee and Labor Contracts, presented the item, and let it be recorded that he presented it faithfully. I have nothing else to add. Our vote was 12-0-0.
Gordon Ennis with the Finance Committee report.
Ladies and gentlemen, the Finance Committee voted 7-4-0. Joan Caldwell and Josh Brown were available from the Labor Contracts Committee to speak to this item. Most Finance Committee members and Ms. Caldwell believe the resolution will not improve the RTM's position with respect to the education unions. The RTM does, in fact, vote on education contracts now. We approved a sense of the meeting resolution last June in that regard. But a sense of the meeting resolution is not binding, so the Board of Ed and the respective unions negotiate and resolve their contract issues. On the basis of no harm, no foul, one could support this resolution. But in the committee, there was clearly a court of discord, partly because there's a belief that an effort like this is pointless. We are not going to get the support from Hartford that we need in order to exercise some authority over these contracts, and therefore, we're wasting a lot of time. On the other hand, the majority felt that it's worth it because we at least want to complain to somebody, and this is a way to do it. The item really concerns a larger question, however, of whether or not the RTM and the town will ever enjoy parity when negotiating with the education unions, and the court's out on that. Thank you.
Doug Wells, Chair of our Legislative and Rules Committee.
Mr. Moderator, ladies and gentlemen, our committee took this item up last Monday evening. We're assisted by Attorney Wayne Fox of the Law Department. Attorney Fox provided us with his opinion that this resolution is in legal order. While the resolution does not identify itself as a sense of the meeting resolution, it's clearly a SOMR, since it requests that the town legislators propose amendments to the MIRA state statutes. We only took a vote as to legal order. Our vote on that was 10-0-0. Districts four and seven absent.
Thank you. Discussion on item eight. Will the district chairs please mark your voting cards? Item number eight, and proceed to poll your delegation. I have the results of the vote on item number six, the municipal improvement regarding the central fire station. Those in favor, 165; opposed, 20; abstaining, 5. That municipal improvement is approved. The last item on our call now comes before us. This is item number 11. Commissioner of Public Works.
Good evening. Amy Seibert, Commissioner of Public Works. Resolved that the sum of $1,165,000 be and the same is hereby appropriated to be added to capital account number Z315-59830-12, with the three numbers to be assigned by finance, known as Greenwich High School soils program.
Thank you. Will a member please move the adoption of the resolution? Resolution on item 11 has been moved and seconded. Mr. Brady with the report of our Education Committee.
Good evening again. We met last Monday night. All districts represented to consider this item. This is a Public Works interim appropriation request for $1.165 million to fund the interim remediation of contaminated Greenwich High School athletic fields, and quantify the extent of the contamination to develop a long-term permanent remediation plan. We were assisted by David Thompson, Deputy Public Works Commissioner, and Mike Dougherty of AECom, the town's environmental contractor, and Joe Ross, Chairman of the MISA Building Committee. The Department of Public Works is taking the lead role in the planning and implementation of the GHS remediation project. As shown in the explanatory notes, there are really two parts to this. There's, the first piece is a $560,000 component, which is for the remediation and fencing to enable the restoration of use of the five artificial fields and isolate the natural fields from incursion while the project is carried out in the longer term. The $605,000, second piece, is for deeper testing, about 154- to 6-foot-deep boreholes in the, on the site, to assess what contamination, if any, is in the deep fill under the athletic fields and parts of the parking lot. Public Works and AECom will expect to complete this assessment and develop a long-term remediation plan by the end of this coming March. To date, there's been extensive cooperation between Board of Ed, Public Works, Parks and Rec, Board of Health, MISA Building Committee, working on this project for the last, I think it's two months, it seems a lot longer. There is a more detailed report on the RTM website. Our vote on this was 12-0-0 to recommend appropriation. Thank you.
Thank you. Gordon Ennis with the Finance Committee report.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Ladies and gentlemen, the Finance Committee voted 9-2-0 on this item. Districts one and seven voted no. This was a last-minute addition to the call, but everybody likes surprises, huh? Joe Ross, Chair of the GHS Building Committee, was the principal speaker before the Finance Committee, and he was assisted by Dave Thompson, Deputy Commissioner, DPW, and Mike Dougherty, the project manager for AECom, which right now is doing the Cosco Power Plant remediation. Amy Seibert was also there to introduce these folks. The contaminants that were detected, I think everyone knows right now, were from the surface down to about 12 inches. We don't know how much it's going to cost to remediate this area, and we won't know until these tests are done. So if we don't approve this item tonight, we won't be able to find out how much it's going to, how substantial the contaminants are. The interesting thing about this overall is that the MISA Building Committee is not responsible for the soils program, so this is not a part of MISA. This is going to be a town responsibility. The prospect of identifying the polluters is remote, so it doesn't look like there's going to ever be a third-party recovery, but we don't know. So there were genuine concerns about why two building projects went forward and we didn't detect these contaminants. The committee was concerned about that. The committee was understanding that we have to spend this money, hence, a majority voted in favor of it. Two people did not. And the attitude on some, with some of the members on the Finance Committee was that they want to look at this in more detail, and therefore, we appointed an ad hoc subcommittee to investigate alternative solutions, and Mark Pruner, Mark Mindich, and Bob Maddox volunteered to staff that subcommittee. If they develop anything, we'll let you know. Thank you very much.
Karen Fossliotis with the Health and Human Services Committee report.
Item 11 came before the Health and Human Services Committee. Amy Seibert, Commissioner of Public Works, and Dave Thompson, Deputy Commissioner of Public Works, presented an overview to the committee. As previously related, excavation along the perimeter of the west parking lot of the high school revealed PCBs and other contaminants. Since the MISA Building Committee had the personnel and equipment in place that was necessary to do follow-up testing, they initially took the lead. The Department of Public Works became involved when they were asked to sign off as the town's agent on the manifest and paperwork that was necessary to move the contaminated soil off the site. Since DPW has had experience with contaminated sites, notably the Cosco Power Plant remediation, they now have become the lead agency for further work on the high school site. Ms. Seibert stressed that this is a collaborative effort between DPW, the Department of Parks and Rec, the Board of Education, and that DPW is simply the program manager for the site. They are working with a consultant, AECom, who is putting together a site investigation plan that will scope out the areas requiring long-term remediation, if any. The testing that will be done will also include approximately 20 deep soil borings to determine whether there are any hotspots at the excavation site for the new auditorium. The cost for this preliminary investigation, as well as interim remediation within the MISA footprint, is now $1.165 million. Committee members had numerous questions regarding the proposed remediation. It was noted that if we do not put together a plan, that the regulators would be driving the project. The site investigation and ultimate remediation plan is a way for the town to provide the starting talking points for ultimate negotiation with the EPA and Connecticut DEEP. Of course, the question was asked what the commission imagines as the total cost of remediation, and the answer is that it's too early to estimate. However, it is hoped that the answer to that question will be provided by the consultants within six to eight weeks. The other question as to whether the cost of MISA will be left whole or reduced by the amount of the remediation of the MISA footprint was also discussed. Ms. Seibert noted that she was only the technical advisor and project manager, and that she was sure that this issue would likely be taken up between the Board of Ed and the BET. For the time being, the BET will be segregating all remediation costs under one budget number, separating the costs as to MISA-related and non-MISA-related expenditures. The committee also noted, our committee also noted, that there were questions that still cannot be answered with respect to both the remediation and MISA, and some were whether or not there was some requirement before excavation, as to whether or not there was a town ordinance or state law that required some environmental sampling. We still don't really understand that directly. With that, the vote of the committee was 10-0-0, with districts two and three absent.
Thank you. Rick Crowe with the report of our Public Works Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Fellow members, Public Works Committee met last Monday evening to consider this item. Although the item was not formally referred to us, so the committee took a vote up at the beginning to actually take the item up, and that vote was 10-0-0, again with districts one and two absent. My fellow chairmen have done an excellent job in reporting most of the details of what this item entails. All that I would add is that there are two goals at the present time, and one of them is critical for those of us that have children in the fall events, and that is to get the Greenwich High School athletic fields up and running as soon as possible. And then the second is to assess what needs to be done for the remediation for both the short and long term, and to put the town in a position through its consultant to make sure that we can not have to possibly incur all the remediation costs at one time, and we could phase in a plan and make this work from a financial standpoint. At the end of the discussions, we had realized that it was not the fault of MISA by any means that these contaminants were there. Obviously, it was because of construction for the MISA project that these contaminants were discovered, and that it is a town responsibility to clean them up. We have that responsibility. We need to meet that responsibility. So the Public Works Committee voted 10-0-0 in favor of this item, with districts one and two absent. Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Thank you. Discussion on item 11. Mr. Boutel, District Eight.
I have the results of the vote on item number seven, which was the appropriation of $24,000 plus. Those in favor, 170; opposed, 7; abstaining, 3. I also have the result of the vote on item eight, which was the sense of the meeting resolution regarding the labor contracts issue. Those in favor, 132; opposed, 36; abstaining, 11. That item has carried.
Mr. Boutel on item 11.
Mr. Moderator, fellow members, this seems like common sense that we have to vote for the money. It's an environmental problem we have to clean up. But in the process of all the committee reports in our district and the discussion, sometimes we'll have the advantage of having Mike Mason, Chairman of the Budget Committee, there. We didn't at our district meeting this time. And my concern is this. As I understand it, we started the year in our budget with $4 million in the reserve contingencies. Through this appropriation and the money already spent on MISA, we've now spent half of that. And my question, Mr. Moderator, through you, my concern is ultimately, what is the cost? As we do these borings and we discover potentially additional issues, if this project comes in, and the remediation cost comes in, potentially in the millions of dollars, and we blow through the contingency, how do we handle that? I agree that this is not the fault of MISA, but if we blow through our reserve for contingencies and we are now in September, what happens later in the year? So, Mr. Moderator, through you, I would ask a member of the Board of Estim and Taxation, we want to resolve this problem as quickly as possible. The deadline set in the explanatory comments we're giving, I believe, are March. What happens come March when there's no money left in the reserve for contingency?
Is there anyone who would care to answer that question? Mr. Stephen Walco, Chair of the BET.
So on a cash flow basis, we do have the cash for this appropriation. We have cash in the capital non-recurring account, and obviously, we would have to look to other accounts to see what monies are available. You also have a budget process coming before you, and we have a debt policy now and a fund balance policy. So all of these constraints do implicate, or are implicated, through this process. But there is money to fund this $1.165 million. There is money to appropriate for additional amounts. But we're going to be looking at that as we start addressing the fiscal year 13 budget in February, and so we're going to have to take a look at that, how that bumps up against our debt policy, and make tough decisions at that time, if necessary. So it is a concern, but it's not a concern at this point from a cash flow basis.
Further discussion on item 11. Will the district chairs please mark your voting cards? Item 11, and proceed to poll your delegation. That being the last item on our agenda, we will need to await the result of that vote before proceeding to adjourn our meeting. Mr. Walco, once again, the public hearing that the BET is holding on Nathaniel Witherell is October... October 17th. Nathaniel Witherell project, assuming that it is approved by the BET, and they are scheduled to vote in November, would come before us thereafter. I have the result of the vote on item 11, the appropriation for the soil contamination. Those in favor, 152; opposed, 13; abstaining, 4. That item has carried. There being no further business to come before the meeting, an absent objection, the meeting stands adjourned upon unanimous consent. Thank you all for coming. Have a safe trip home.